On the agenda, we have the approval of the September eight, two thousand twenty regulations, the approval of the September eight, two thousand twenty work session, approval of the law standard, and the new section of the two thousand product development fund, and for approval of the management and key manning associated documents. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question is a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. If everybody is present, let me show them the question. Question passed. Approval of the bottom five agenda, where we're tabled item number four, tabled item number seven. Do I hear a motion to approve? Item number seven.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Question carries on. Presentation and recognition and appreciation of Lake County Ward Commissioners and County Development Services. It is clear that I quoted a grantee awarded in there of one hundred thousand dollars to support forty small businesses in the city of Marlboro.
So, there is no presentation per se. We just want to go on record as saying that we appreciate the opportunity for the hundred thousand dollars that were awarded for the small businesses in Marlboro. And so, we acknowledge that, and when we send out a letter to the small businesses, it will also acknowledge the county's role in that funding as well.
And to tell you, I want to step further. The number of people who actually applied for that grant was larger than that, and that's why it's taken out of the carry grant.
Yes. This is for forty of the sixty-one applications.
For those of you, so that doesn't really give you an extra mission outside of this thing for the record.
Right.
But, you know, our small businesses out there are really like, they hired a number of, you know, regular employees. You know, please shop, you know. It's nice to shop at Walmart, I get that, but if these are more a small business, you know, we all talk about different things that we'd like to happen in the city. I'm pretty sure Walmart's gonna make it on their own, but the rest of us businesses, you know, and we've been reading with them, you know, almost every Tuesday, you know, for a long time, and talking to them, and we're gonna continue that, so we've done with hotels, we've tackled churches, we've done with a number of others. And so, it's good. And, you know, at some point, you can't continue with that, you know, fifty, sixty percent of investment that just, you know, just packed it in. So, support all small businesses again, that's what kind of makes it, you know, meaningful. Item number five, confirmation of economic developer, development director, my opinion, approval established salary of eighty thousand dollars. There was some comments on that earlier, before for discussion.
Mayor, we can have a motion part of this.
Well, let's have the discussion first, and then I'll just go right through it.
Is it open?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, my concern is that Mr. Dean's resume and our job description, as I understood it, the job description was presented as economic development manager. Is that correct?
And we had a discussion about that. But let's just say that not everything that's written in our job descriptions is a hundred percent accurate. If you're not the person who's actually eligible for that economic development director in the city of Marlboro, there's no other type of that known, right? So, if you were to tell me today that you have a manager position, I'll tell you that it didn't exist now. In ten years past, since I was here. But in terms of what position you're hiring for, you know, is economic development director, right? And if there's a gentleman, we would agree higher, you know, and we can negotiate salaries from the point of view that it's a comparable salary to others in that position. And it's fair, you know, obviously, we are, you know, we got challenges, and this particular position is around for at least seven years.
It is, well, it has not had a specific person in the, in the position for seven years.
Okay.
And I believe that was due to revenue partly?
Okay.
The city was experiencing financial issues in the past? Several?
Your city's lost two hundred and twenty million dollars, which is how you tax it in return. That determines how you pay your police officers and your firefighters, and we've just got to have somebody who picks up that five hundred response and actively recruits in that business community. You know, we heard last week and the week before that they might not like every type of business that's managed to show up here, right? And they look at it and say, well, then maybe we ought to do a better job in that.
Yeah, I understand that, but also, my concern is that we, I specifically asked to have three other candidates to submit resumes so that we would have a larger pool than three.
Well, we basically disagreed as to whether that was necessary. I vote, right, so it passed to offer this gentleman a job. I don't know if we've done that.
I understand.
In this particular case.
At the time, we did not know what the salary was gonna be offered.
It's not necessarily true to be the actual.
It wasn't on our, in our packet.
The actual position as opposed to no pursuit, whether, unless he's a firefighter or whatever.
Okay, well, I'd just like to go on, I'd like to go on record saying that I think that that, that his resume presented itself as an entry level person, and we're paying, I think, too much for entry level.
He is not an entry level person. What you can say in fairness is that he doesn't have a tremendous amount of government experience.
And development experience.
What I can say is he has a reasonable amount of private business experience.
Right.
And at this point, the government itself is having challenges based on revenues, but it's the private sector that we have to reach out to to be able to advance toward.
I understand. I'm concerned now, we're cutting budgets, and I think that that salary is high, since we're cutting budgets already, I think it's time for, in my opinion, is entry level.
Okay. Other questions, any other comments?
I agree with Councilwoman Dean with regard to the candidates and the comparison of the resumes at the time. The individuals that you approved, I hope, was not the best suited for the position, certainly in my opinion, and certainly without my vote that was cast. So, the continuation of the issue is certainly with regard to the experience, the capability, the skill set, and certainly the salary, and the changing of what we knew as a management position, being the economic development director. We certainly want to go on record as saying, you know, we are not comfortable with that individual and their skill set and capabilities, as it was specifically demonstrated by their resume during a period of time where we have reviewed many resumes of current city staff in an effort to make sure, I guess, this new council, in an effort to make sure that people are qualified. So, if it's going to work well with some, let's make sure it works well with all. And with regard to, again, the resume as it was provided to us in comparison to the other candidates, and there was a request made for additional candidates, we don't have that certain confidence in the vote that was previously passed.
All right, I'm gonna bring a little comment to it. So, we have a passage through to, we offer a gentleman a job. At that point, that decision, though, I'd be kept to be really careful to take a second right of the hour, and an open session, basically take a step back, and maybe not make this individual feel as welcome as he should. He is on the long team, right? He deserves every opportunity to do this job. We will expect him to do it, right? But we cannot disparage him before he even walks into the door. You know, he's lived in this community twenty-seven years. It's not like his friends and family don't know that what you're saying. That's not fair. And I'm called for. Make a motion to approve. Do I hear a motion?
So, both?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. All those in favor say aye, or a can't. Let's take, all those opposed, two. I vote for, break the tie. I vote for Mr. Daggie to take it. Approval of staff recommendations and change to fire marshal job description. That's right.
Yes, you have in your packet both the, the one that's marked up with all the recommended changes and the final version that in fact accepts the changes, so.
Can you write those changes real quick, just off the W?
I can get Chief Glenn to do it, just off the W instead.
Two people haven't got in here from my department.
Yeah, but behind it, or in front, there are two separate ones. The marked up version and then the final version. We just wanted you to be clear on what the changes were.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. The Rutherford's policy, a couple of years ago, was a long standing fire marshal, Mark had retired, and at the time, I used a lot of national standards and the Burge and all. And after evaluating the position for a couple of years, I deleted several of those line items and added some that are more specific to the city of Marlboro, and that would be under functions of job, knowledge, skills, and abilities, and then also made some changes on the qualifications to more suit the needs of the city of Marlboro.
Questions? Let me ask one. Obviously, we want to hire internally if we can, and we know that for the best part, we see lots of references to ship captain and ship captain abilities and things like that, but in the past, we had at least appointed one fire marshal that wasn't a captain, sorry.
Right, and, and the, the one thing that says you're only captain is that, let's see. This is a city of Marlboro, fire ship captain will need all the qualifications to be a city of Marlboro ship captain, with the exception of prior employment history with the city of Marlboro. And so, a lot of those requirements are firefighter level classes and leadership classes and those sort of things.
But we, I honestly don't want somebody in there, right?
Well, it's not shaving up to in our bank.
No.
It's not, and if I may, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I've come to understand it, the trade off for shift work, because people have other jobs, or they get two days off in between, to lose that to become an administrative position, the, the pay increase is not healthy enough for them to do it, because a lot of our firefighters drive in from far left, because they only have to drive in once every three days.
So, what we're basically saying, we have qualified people, but we can't afford to take the job.
Well, because we would first have to, we would probably have to look at that first, right? I don't know if the people that would be interested, we'd first have to confirm they're qualified. But yes, it, it would be that if we have somebody that's interested and they're qualified, no, they're no takers because of the threshold of the salary. Is that fair, chief?
No problem with the, the policy, because obviously, we approved that, makes sense, makes something of that, but in that factory, could we at least see if anybody in there wants that?
Again, we've, we've, we've already done our internal research. That's why we're, can tell you this.
So, let's, let's be clear. Irrespective of what we have.
Okay.
We're saying, we know we have somebody that's qualified in our department to be fire marshal.
So, we do what we don't?
I'm, I'm asking you again.
We, we probably only have one person that meets all of these qualifications, but in the past, we've given some leniency, and we all of them, if they wanted to classes, we'll say, okay, we're gonna take you on, on probation period to get these classes done.
Makes sense. We're gonna probably give you a shot. Because some of these guys have worked here a long time, right? And this is a good opportunity for somebody, it's a great thing to have in your resume, and I don't, you know, but I need to know who these people are in terms, I can see the data in terms of who you ask, and who you're talking to. But man, I certainly would like to, you know, reward people who work here as we can with a shot, otherwise, we go outside, right? And, you know, it's the old school, you know, the W numbers, the W down, I mean, we, we know our people, right? So, I don't have an answer to that question, but let's, let's, let's look again.
Sort of a, okay.
And let's say you don't need everything that we want. Can you get somebody close? You know, and what you're doing there is you're giving somebody an opportunity that says, you know, your work ethic, your loyalty is rewarded, but you're gonna have to improve and get yourself, right? And then, obviously, if it becomes a dollar number, then help me with that. You guys aren't exactly owed a pay, right? So, then, how come we can't get somebody who would work for a certain dollar? That's a separate issue, I understand. So, as soon as we get somebody there, then.
Well, I don't think we, we have an appropriate question from that perspective, where if there was an opportunity to increase the salary, would it change some of the answers? That's what we'll have to look at.
Right, we'll approach that, that direction.
Because again, there are some that maybe work for other departments or have other jobs that aren't, that would mean they couldn't be here Monday through Friday, not, you know, not.
Not fully working, two jobs as firefighters for different kinds of, right?
Or in some cases, probably, you know, other jobs in general. I mean, you know, there's a tradition.
I can agree with other jobs in general, because as a contractor or something like that, that's what most of these guys do, right? Somewhere there, I don't really, but I like to, because if we walk away from someone, you know, let, let that be our decision collectively, and not, because we didn't pursue the best we can.
We agree.
Table seven, second reading.
No, I have the gentleman still need to bet on the job description?
Oh, yeah. Any, any other questions, done? I'll, I need a motion to approve. A motion to, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passed, good to go. Table seven, ordinance is resolution, second reading of an ordinance setting fee schedule for sanitation two thousand twenty dash oh nine. We've had that before, something for a while. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Someone.
All right, a motion to approve, second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passed, yes. First reading of an ordinance for two thousand twenty ten facility usage fee, and as stated earlier in the work session, this relates to creating some flexibility for the conference center, so that we might be able to do some bundling. We're obviously leasing out the Walcom Center as best we can. The town center, obviously, we had one of our first events out there on November first, and it was.
And the exhibit space, the dark.
And the exhibit space. At some point, that, you know, it's not ready yet for ultimately, we might get it ready. And because that's a first reading, there, there's no additional issues. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven bus stops, and this is related to taking out some of the exemptions, so that all parties would have to follow the existing city government in terms of bus stops and those things. That is also a first reading, and we'll forward other discussions on that, as stated earlier. General comments, City Mayor?
None.
Citizens?
Yes. Mayor and Council, I want you to know, it was refreshing to know that we had reached out to other stakeholders when it come to the Marla situation. I hope we're mindful that we can't allow bus stops to impact the livelihoods of us. We also have to understand that we can't allow beautification of bus stops to affect the relationship with our county stakeholders and our state delegation, because we, I don't think it's true upon us to go out here and be a renegade and go this alone. I think we're gonna have to have everybody involved in this process, and we're gonna have to collectively go to the table and fight this issue, because Forest Park has the same issue we have. Every Jonesboro, every other municipality in the county have the same issue. So, I think it would be better if we collectively come together, sit down at the table and do some negotiating when it comes to this. And I think we might get a better outcome, because bus stops and trash cans shouldn't affect citizens' livelihoods. I don't care how much beautification we want, we happy to afford the out. And anything I'm gonna say is, and I'm gonna leave it alone, if we want investors to come into this city, or this county, and bring jobs, high paying jobs, I'm not talking about minimum wage jobs, high paying jobs into this area, then we're gonna have to have some transportation for them to get there. Everybody's got an automobile, so we have to be mindful of that at all times. The other thing that I want to talk about is our Veterans Day program in November. Veterans Day is on the eleventh month, the eleventh day, the eleventh night. And the last few years, Marla, the city of Marlboro has put on a very impactful Veterans Day ceremony here in this city, and we're asking all of you citizens to come out and participate this year, because we need you. It's gonna be a little bit different this year. So, Marla, guess what? I mean, Marla, guess what? You're gonna be a bigger stakeholder. The citizens have been the stakeholder over the previous years. Because of COVID nineteen, we're not gonna feed you in the community room, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna need you to become better stakeholders if we're gonna provide a meal for our veterans this year. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Other comments?
Hello. On this sanitation deal with the yard waste, we're gonna have to come up with a little better plan. I already discussed it with Billy, like, things you call in, so you're gonna have yard waste there, well, just in my neighborhood, within four or five houses. Saturday, two people had stuff out. By Sunday, then, three people had stuff out. Then come Monday, four people had stuff out. And that was kind of like over the whole weekend, so I'm just supposed to call. I mean, we just need to have set days, and that's when it needs to be done. I noticed you got on the work session, I don't know if you're gonna get to it, but I'm gonna bring it up. About Christmas, doing it at Old Town Marla, it needs to stay right here in the city, in the middle of the city, Marlboro. Christmas in the park is what we've always had. And the committees, they've been on the list since January, DEA, URA, none of those have met all year long, and I think nothing else, they just need to get together.
Hopefully, we'll have an economic developer that will help us out. Other comments, citizens?
Mayor, Cherry, did you mean bulk or yard waste?
Yard waste.
Okay.
Leaves, sticks, that kind of stuff.
There you said.
We're calling for yard waste or bulk?
It's bulk.
Yard waste, city's gonna pick it up.
Yeah, but I think we call and let the city know we have bulk, right? But not yard waste. They are.
Right now, with yard waste.
Well, the way I read it on the, on the.
And right now, it's still picking up.
Website did say you had to call.
Until November, I believe, right?
Billy, do you intend for the call in to be for bulk and yard waste?
That's correct. So, we have actually set it up where there'll be set days for the different, yeah.
But the mayor and council, we will ultimately have this plan approved, so if that needs to be changed, I mean, you know, we're not the kings of the kingdom, so, so to your point, this is something the council's gonna want to consider, is that do you want to call in for bulk only and a set date for yard waste? I mean, these are the service points that, that y'all will be approving in the, in the, in the plan. You know, when it, because again, if, if Billy's plan is for everybody to call in for bulk and yard waste, and the council wants it different, then we need to hear from.
Well, I think yard waste is picked up on around.
That yard waste?
But if somebody's got a couch, make a phone call, right?
That's right.
Right.
We, we can. Yeah, the great thing about it is, the city is correct.
We're gonna do whatever we need to do to make sure that the residents of Marlboro are comfortable with this program. So, I.
We're gonna do what, what the mayor and council are coming with, they're gonna do with the residents.
Well, I mean, that too, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, gee, we'll make whatever necessary modifications to make sure that.
But isn't, isn't the current garbage company still responsible for, you know, everything until November? Is that?
November one, that's right. Yes, sir.
They pick up the yard waste and the bulk on the same day, but.
But that leads to the question that you just had, and basically, that's an information issue. In other words, we haven't even started the program yet. This is an existing problem, and your neighbors are putting out shout out or a jousting.
No, they pick up at our house on Mondays. I was just saying that if you have to call it in to pick up your leaves or your limbs that fell in the yard because of the storm or whatever, you gotta call him. That's what I was just trying to point out to you, that some people had stuff out by Saturday, some people had some more out Sunday, and Monday, there were some more. So, there were like four houses stoking together, right there at mine.
And plus, we acknowledge that most people are gonna do yard work on the weekends.
Yeah.
Then maybe it is reasonable to leave yard waste Monday and call in for bulk.
They should just have a regular.
Needs to be one day a week, same day every week.
Yeah.
As much as possible, because in my case, I always have yard waste. I put it out on Sunday. I don't want it laying there for a week before they pick it up, because I know those folks come now on Monday, and they always are there.
Yeah.
If those bags, which we're supposed to put in paper bags, get wet very often, it's gonna be all over the yard again, and that's unacceptable. Plus, it leaves the neighborhood looking like crap for a long period of, all week long instead of.
Well, we know the day's Monday, right? So, we can at least something out. But if you're gonna drop a couch out there, give us.
It doesn't have to be Monday, but that's a great day for us.
Yeah.
It is a good day for me, but it might not be for you like.
We, we, you make a great point, and what we're gonna do our darnedest to do is keep with the schedule that we have now in place, and most likely, I'm not one hundred percent sure, I'm gonna take direction from the mayor and council, but if you have a couch, a stove, or refrigerator that needs to be picked up, you're gonna have to call us.
Yeah, that's right. That's good.
And you come and pick it up, and we'll, we'll work all the logistics out. There's gonna be a little, a few quirky things that we'll have to fix.
Well, I'm just talking about the yard waste, like the sticks, the leaves, the whatever you've got out there. It needs to be done on a regular schedule in a certain neighborhood.
And, and we will, we will do that. And again, the way.
Got your number.
Yeah, I, I, you know my number, I'm certain you'll give me a call. I don't think there's anybody in here who doesn't have a number.
But I thought one of the problems was that you couldn't do the whole city on the same day.
And we can't. That's why I'm saying, we will set it up so that first and foremost, we're gonna lease it, and make sure we're out there getting a feel for what we have. I've been doing that for the last month.
Hold on a minute. So, we can drive the city in a whole day, absolutely.
Can you pick up all of the?
But it'll depend, well, it'll depend on how much everybody puts out. I mean, you know, like, and again, it's only if you run out of hours, you know, I mean.
We can, we can figure that out.
We're, we're, yeah, it's, I mean, I understand, and I mean, I hear what everyone's saying. And, and what I'm, what I'm saying is this, on our end, we're gonna do whatever we need to do to make sure we service you guys the way that you need to be serviced. We may not get it right the first time. We may not even get it right the second time, but by the third time, I guarantee you, we're gonna get it right, and we're gonna make sure you're happy. And if you do have a problem, I'm gonna give all of you my phone number, because I'm not shy to answering that phone, and if I need to come out of my pickup truck and handle a situation, I'm prepared to do that too.
And we're prepared to send them.
Because at the end of the day.
But, but yeah, we're, we're prepared to do what we think we need to do to make this
program be successful, and you guys will play, play a valuable role in that. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna need your feedback, and coming here and expressing your concerns and your thoughts is very important to us, and we will work around it. We will help you, and you will help us, and it'll be a partnership. I can guarantee you that.
Oh, thanks, Billy.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I have.
I'm just wondering.
Councilwoman Tran asked me before the meeting how it looked to me as far as the Lee Street and Lake Carbon intersection. It looks really good. The barriers have helped, I think, but they've not solved all the problems. While I was sitting there waiting to come across the tracks for this meeting, I noticed a couple of problems. They'll pull into that center lane that's supposed to go straight across when they're coming off of Lee Street, and when the light changes and everybody's gone, then they take off that way. That could be a problem with an accident. The other thing I saw was, they're still blocking the turn lane, you know, because they don't, they think, nobody's gonna give me a chance to get out. So, there's still an issue there that, I don't know, maybe a sign that says, you are not allowed to turn left onto fifty-four from this area or some, I, I don't know what the problem, if there's something maybe you can work out for that.
Well, we, we started, and then you look at it and say, okay, what worked, what didn't work.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, we've got those rollers a little bit further out toward that, and, and again, you can't stop anybody from running over curbs at some point, but, you know, Police Park is doing a pretty good job, you know, we can make a reasonable amount of revenue there, and we're getting their attention pretty hard, so that's, that's a good one. Now, when you look over in that secondary lane, when they're trying to turn left, they're truly left on fifty-four, not necessarily two right lanes. You know, that's. You know, that might be one of those where we say, you know, can we put some vlogs on the other side? Or we start to lock the locks at that point. And there's nothing that would keep them from literally driving all the way out to fifty-four highway and really making investments. You know, but it's still a, a far better solution than basically trying to shut those things down. Sure, sex over there, I had with them earlier in the week, and we're thankful that things worked out. So, you know, some additional water change.
I appreciate, you know, what you did. And like I told her, it's a start, you know? We can't solve everything right now, but I appreciate it.
Oh, we have something? Thank you. All right. Questions from the City Council or comments from the City Council? Go ahead.
Well, Jeff Calaway departed soon to his next career path. And I just want to say thank you for serving Marlborough and wishing luck in his career path.
Yes, I do. I also would like to say thanks to the Chief for the years of service and also for, uh, being very instrumental in helping, um, the citizens organize Neighborhood Watch Program. Uh, it's something, I'm hearing people saying that they're missing it, and they hope the pandemic goes away so we can have our Neighborhood Watch Program again. Also, um, and for being, uh, that person that is, um, for the city, for the citizens. And, and he did a fantastic job, and he will be missed, but I, uh, am happy for him for the, um, the career change that he's, he's taken. Also, I would like to say that, um, over the weekend, um, I don't know if everybody agrees, but we did lose a Supreme Court Judge, Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Uh, she did a lot for women's rights. And she's, um, no longer with us, but I just, um, wanna say that I appreciate her being a black woman for everything that she fought for, for me and others of, of, um, and minorities. So I'm in red, white, and blue today, Ruth R. Beechey.
All right. Ms. Stein?
Thank you. I would like to start by saying, again, uh, I as well appreciate Chief Calaway's contribution to leadership for the city. Um, certainly, uh, a man of integrity, uh, who really captured and embodied, uh, some, some positivity with regard to the leadership of the police force and some of the programs and conversations that he certainly had with citizens. Also, um, I want to piggyback on Mr. Khan's comment and a comment that was made by you earlier there. When we talk about team, let's be intentional as a council when we talk about the word team. Changes are always inevitable with regard to elected positions and councils and, and leadership styles. That's certainly, uh, something that we can expect. But we always have to operate as a team for the citizens of the city. I would like to say that I can appreciate the pivot with regard to, uh, the tactic expressed to better serve citizens with the bus stops. But I need everyone on the council to understand that whether we vote the same way or we don't, we are still a part of the team. The team that we serve is for the citizens of Marlborough. And whether it is expressed on your way in the door that you have your team and maybe it's exclusionary at some point, fast forward to where we are today in September, the team reacted. And we're gonna go down a better road and a better course for the citizens. So when we speak of team, it's a council with four members, and there's a mayor. So let's make sure that when we speak of team, we are inclusive of all council members. I appreciate it.
Mr. Khan?
Uh, Sammy, as everybody else, I'd like to, uh, say thank you to the Chief and good, I mean, if you want to say, uh, the best of luck to him. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Mayor, I'm gonna jump right in here, I apologize because before you make your final comments, Chief Swin would like to, uh, say something about the blood drive, if you may.
Oh. Reminder, Mayor, there are blood drives coming up October eighth in the community room. This will be our third drive this year. Mayor, we look forward to seeing you again, uh, on October eighth.
Didn't give it up the first time.
Didn't give it up.
First two times, right?
You build back up, so you gotta give again. Uh, it's a great opportunity to help save a life. Uh, the neat thing about, uh, the Red Cross does now, they track your blood, and they let you know where your blood ended up. Uh, the first time I gave this year, it went to, uh, University of Alabama Birmingham. And this time, I went to Chowa in Atlanta to help a child. And so that's a really cool thing, you can track your blood. Uh, if you're not able to give, we need volunteers, probably about six volunteers is what we need for the day. It's from ten until three. You can volunteer to work two and a half or three hours if you like. Uh, but if you want to volunteer, please let me know. I'll get you signed up.
Sir, and can we put that on the, uh, Facebook?
Yeah, it's there in all three languages. And I just, I think I saw an email today that, uh, the census is down to five days for, for completing the census.
What's our percentage? Collins Park told me that they're at like forty-seven percent.
Oh, well, as a county, we're higher than that. I was like fifty, I think fifty-seven.
He was in a real worried state, you know, and things aren't going as well as you'd like.
Say county fifty-seven? No, it was higher. It was higher than fifty. Because when we were in... You may know more than... Fifty-nine, you're saying, like, fifty-nine?
And I remember, just we did a, we had everybody all say as well, um, Calaway's doing a good job. Uh, he, he's gonna go on to some things, and, and I think that relationship is gonna be beneficial to us as well. Um, you know, we look forward to the process of line number, another good one, um, early stages of that. You know, let's, let's see about getting an interim chief, and then let's see about, um, irons and talent. And we've certainly brought talent before. You know, if I had to bring something out, I would, I would basically say, you know, you know, our, our salary schedules are, are pretty weak, you know? And, you know, when we're looking for talent, talent didn't show up for weeks. You know, it, it, you know, so you have to decide, and it doesn't necessarily mean it's all perfect. Um, but yeah, if you want to become, you know, you gotta pay. If you want mediocre, okay, you know, we gotta like it in, in terms of, you know, growing some internal talent. I, I, I'm just saying, you know, be prepared to bring the best, and, you know, we'll have to bring a pocket vote to back it up, you know, if that's necessary. And, uh, I think that's, you know, might well spend.
All right, we're gonna go right back into the work session.